Good evening. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is November 12th, 2024. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Please bow your head for a brief invocation. As we come together this evening, let us all remember that we are here to work together and make wise decisions for the good of our community. I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council. TV operator, Mike Soprani. Mike, thank you for your assistance as for every week. Mr. Scott, Mrs. Hall, and Mr. Sudath have an excused absence this evening. They're attending the National League of Cities. And I'd like to move on at this point to the approval of our minutes. Mrs. Fisher?
Your Honor, I have reviewed not only the council and workshop minutes for October the 22nd, but also the joint council and Board of Education minutes for the 29th of October. I do find them all in order, and I move for their approval.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. We have no proclamations or special presentations this evening. We also have no public hearings. If anyone in the audience would like to come down at this point with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda, they may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity later in the meeting for those to be heard. Is there anyone who wishes to address council? Seeing none, we will continue now with ordinances and second reading. We have one ordinance and second reading. Mrs. Fisher, can I call on you?
Yes, ma'am. I do have an ordinance to amend ordinance numbers 3862-01, 3901-02, 3909-02, 3910-02, and 3949-03 regarding the tax increment financing district for the Governor's Place. It is requested by the city manager's office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And Mr. Chodowski?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. The legislation before council tonight reflects the amendment of five pieces of legislation adopted in 2001, 2002, and 2003 respectively, and that legislation created the Hills and Dale Tax Increment Finance District, which we commonly know as Governor's Place. Since its inception, the district has collected sufficient revenues to fund the initial construction of the defined public infrastructure improvements, which in this case were Governor's Place, Boulevard, and the associated utility infrastructure. Additional district funds will be expended in 2025 to repay Governor's Place Boulevard and update other improvements within the public right of way. Following this 2025 expenditure, a small six-figure balance is anticipated to remain in the TIF fund. The legislation in question will amend the definition of what constitutes a public improvement and thereby amending what the TIF district revenues can be spent on, with the Hills and Dale TIF district bordered by West Dorothy Lane, scheduled for resurfacing in 2025, Dixie Drive, which is scheduled for resurfacing in 2029, and the remaining TIF funds also being eligible to spend on other benefits. We would ask that council adopt this legislation tonight in furtherance of the city's infrastructure improvements.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, we now will move to resolutions, and I'd like to call Mr. Sullivan.
All right. Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc. for the purchase of digital recording hardware and software for the Kettering Communication Center. The estimated cost and the amount available is $63,261.40, and this is requested by the Police Department. I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. The Kettering Police Department is requesting the purchase of digital recording hardware and software for the dispatch center. I'll note that this equipment records the incoming and outgoing phone calls and radio traffic from the center, and it is, as you can imagine, integral to the operations of the dispatch center. The software is known as Eventide, and it replaces outdated recording system technology. Chief, you want to add anything?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept reimbursement from the Ohio Attorney General's Office for police officer training costs. The estimated cost is $67,296.65. There is no amount budgeted. This is requested by the Police Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a request to accept the funds as articulated from the Ohio Attorney General's Office. These funds reimburse us from the state for required continuing professional training of Kettering police officers, Ohio's finest, and will be reimbursed for training that occurred through the third quarter of 2024. These funds offset salary costs recreated that we incurred during the training.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a technical assistance voucher through the Department of Energy, Energy Efficiency, and Conservation Block Grant Program. It is requested by our Sustainability Office, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. These funds, which we are requesting from the Department of Energy, are part of the, I guess, recent bipartisan infrastructure law. There is a program that was created under that which developed block grants for cities to use for studies related to energy, energy efficiency, and conservation activities. So we are planning to apply to receive this voucher. It would be the amount of $119,280. We would plan to use this for technical assistance to help us develop a sustainability plan for the city of Kettering, focusing on energy planning, building efficiency, EV charging stations, and electrifying city fleets. If through this voucher, through the application of this voucher, we would be assigned a technical consultant to the Department of Energy that would assist us in developing this plan. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? I would just like to comment, I believe that this is the first amendment, the resolution that's been put forth by the new Sustainability Department, and I think it's kind of a milestone in the city of Kettering, so. Let's call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for general engineering services. The estimated cost and the cost to be included in the 2025 budget is $75,000. This is requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Let's see, that is... Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is to authorize the general engineering services contract that we have with outside consulting on a task order basis. So if, for instance, we have a project that comes up that is beyond the technical capability of our staff or the time availability of our staff, we will engage with this consultant to perform related projects on a task order as needed basis. We typically do a three-year contract for this with initial one-year terms, and this is the next cycle of three-year, one-term contracts that would start in 2025. Happy to say questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with the Montgomery County Public Defender Commission and the Montgomery County Public Defender Office to provide mandated legal counsel to indigent persons appearing in the Kettering Municipal Court. Estimated cost is $50,000. The amount to be budgeted in 2025, $50,000. This is requested by the Law Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. As you know, the city is required by law to provide legal counsel for indigent persons charged with a violation of city ordinance for which the penalty or any possible adjudication includes the potential loss of liberty. This resolution will authorize a contract with the Montgomery County Public Defender Commission and the Montgomery County Public Defender's Office to provide the required legal counsel. And your law director can answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. No questions? I actually do have one. I'm assuming that, is this for anyone who is in the Kettering Municipal Court, whether or not they're a Kettering resident or not?
If they're charged with the violation of a Kettering ordinance, that is correct. As I think your question is alluding to, the jurisdiction of Kettering Municipal Court also includes Centerville, Washington Township, and Moraine, but this contract is only to supply defense services for people charged with a violation of a Kettering ordinance, but they don't have to be Kettering residents.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for the repair and replacement of damaged equipment at Rosewood Arts Center. The estimated cost is $55,000. It is requested by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, and Mr. Grayson?
Mr. Bergstrasser?
Mr. Bergstrasser?
Thank you, Your Honor. Unfortunately, last month, we had a rather significant water pipe that burst in the ceiling of the kiln room at the Rosewood Arts Center. It caused extensive damage to the pottery kilns and other related equipment. So the resolution tonight will authorize the purchase of replacement equipment and kilns, and we are in the process of submitting this loss to the city's insurance provider. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving amendments to the bylaws of the First Suburbs Consortium of Dayton. This is requested by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. As you know, we are a longstanding, and I believe a founding member, of the First Suburbs Consortium of Dayton. This is a number of First Suburbs built-out communities in the Miami Valley region that work together to identify solutions and strategies for improving, getting ideas for improving each other's communities. That consortium is active, meets regularly, and has been undergoing a process of updating their bylaws. Those bylaws change, changes which were in your agenda package, update the mission, how a quorum is calculated, clean up some language related to the audit, and some additional, what I would call, routine updates to the bylaws. The change in the bylaws requires the approval of the member communities, and that is why it is before you this evening.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
A little technical issue. All right. Sorry. I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. The estimated cost is $182,433.65. This is requested by the Finance Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Grayson?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. The supplemental appropriation addresses four items. The first is $12,437 that's requested carryover from 2023 to 2024. This relates to the acceptance of a donation from the Kettering Police Foundation for a purchase of a drone package and related equipment. The foundation donated the dollars in 2023. The Police Department has researched and tested various drone options and is encumbering the funds in 2024. Additionally, there is a supplemental appropriation of $47,700 requested for the Police and Fire Departments' personnel expenditures. This relates to the wage terms that were approved by the council as it relates to the collective bargaining agreement with the Kettering Association of Dispatchers. The original 2024 budget had 0% across board pay increases for the dispatcher subject to the negotiations. The contracted increase was 3% effective May 20th, 2024. The cost impact of the increase, as in your agenda package, is $33,000 in the Police Department Cost Center, $14,400 in the Fire Department Cost Center. Be glad to answer any questions about that. The third piece is related to the kilns, $55,000 supplemental appropriation for the kilns and equipment that needs to be purchased that Mr. Bergstrasser described to you. And lastly, we need to appropriate the funds that you approved earlier in the meeting, accepting the $67,296.65 for the grant from the State of Ohio for continued professional training. Be glad to answer any questions, Your Honor.
Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our resolutions for this evening. We have no ordinances in first reading. I'd like to call on Mrs. Haislip tonight for any certifications and petitions.
Your Honor, we do have one certification this evening. Planning Commission is recommending approval of Planning Commission Case Number 23-012, zoning text amendment. A public hearing regarding this request will be held on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, at the Kettering City Council meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Now move to our managers' report and community update. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. It's my pleasure to give the community update. Want to point out that Medicare open enrollment is happening. It began October 15th, and it goes through December 7th. And one of the resources we provide to our citizens is that we have a senior services coordinator, and that's Natalie Storms. If somebody needs information regarding Medicare resources, they can contact Ms. Storms at the number on the screen. You'll see on your screen that we have a pickup update, and leaf collection is going to continue throughout the districts in numerical order. Depending on the conditions and the number of leaves to be collected, crews could pass through more than one district in a day, rake the leaves to the curb, but ideally not in the street because we don't want them in the storm sewers. Additionally, we'd appreciate it if there's no limbs that could potentially cause a hazard in any way or damage our equipment, no branches. Be glad to answer any questions regarding that, for sure. And the information is on the website. Native American Heritage Month, the Kettering Board of Community Relations encourages you to learn more about Native American heritage this month and anytime because Kettering is home to all of us. In November, if you didn't know it, is Native American Heritage Month. We want to wish happy Thanksgiving. The city of Kettering's administrative offices will be closed on both Thursday and Friday of Thanksgiving week. Rumkey collection, and this is always important because people need to know how our holidays impact their trash collection, due to the Thanksgiving holiday, rumkey service will be delayed one day for Thursday and Friday customers. So if your Thursday number 28th collection will be delayed till Friday, trash collection for Friday customers will be delayed till Saturday, November 30th. Our small businesses, I'm channeling former council member Tony Klepass. Small Business Saturday is November 30th, and it is critical that everyone show your support for Kettering's small businesses. They certainly support us in many ways throughout the year. Your mayor's tree lighting, Your Honor, is Friday, December 6th, 6 to 8, what has become one of my favorite events in, of the year in Kettering. In Lincoln Park Civic Commons, certainly want people to bring cameras. Dogs are welcome, and you can get pictures taken with Santa Claus himself. Couple other notes, our city council meetings for the month of December will be held on the following dates. December 3rd at 5:00 PM, we're going to start early because we're going to have a budget workshop, talk about the budget for 2025, or the proposed budget, I should say. City council meeting will start at its normal time at 7:30. On December 10th, the workshop, which is the immediate, usually there's two weeks between our meetings, in December, we're going to have our meetings back-to-back on the 3rd and the 10th, back-to-back weeks, that is. December 10th, the workshop will start at its normal time, 6:00 PM, and the city council meeting at 7:30. Couple of other notes, I'm pleased to report that our outstanding Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts team got some well-deserved awards. The Ohio Parks and Recreation Association has annual awards of excellence. Our team received first place for EcoFest in the category of environmental interpretive programs and events, second place, and a second-place award of excellence for both the Tree Fest and Tree Love, also in the environmental and interpretive program and events category, and a second place for our Gentilly Nature Park for the category of capital improvement projects between $500,000 and $10 million. So it is unusual for a city to get three awards from OPRA in a given year. We happen to do that regularly. We're pleased to achieve such excellence again. Additionally, for over 40 years, our finance team has received the Government Finance Officers' Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. And 2020, we just received notice that our 2023 documents once again received that award. And so you can rest assured that our financial reporting is second to none because of the great work done by our finance team. And lastly, I am pleased to report that I am this year not in this. However, if you had the opportunity to attend Kettering's Dancing With The Stars held by the Kettering Police Foundation and emceed by our, ably emceed by our chief of police, it will be televised beginning November 17th at 8:00 PM on GATV 6.
Do you have your wig on this year?
It was an excellent event to support our police foundation, and our thanks go out to all of the dancers who took the risk to, to dance in front of hundreds of people and be televised doing it.
How well you know.
Yes. That's all I have, Your Honor. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports or council reports. And you want to...
Is that required?
Oh, yes, I guess you're right, it will be. Before we get to council reports, at this time, if there's anyone who'd like to speak before city council, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address, and if there's anyone who would like to speak before council, they may come down right now. Don't get run over by the stampede. Okay. Apparently, we have no one, so we will now move to council reports, and Mrs. Fisher, you may go first.
Thank you, ma'am. It was a very busy weekend. I will tell you, every single day, there was something going on, starting with Friday night. I was our representative for the Week Here Arts donor appreciation, and I'm holding my little pen up here because Claudia, who is in the KLA class, helped me learn how to be creative, and so I was so excited because that's not my first skill, was being creative. The next day, Saturday, it was off-the-hook busy at the Kettering Ruck in Latham. Took me 20 minutes to find a parking spot. Went into the building and was quickly overwhelmed with the amount of people that were doing their small business shopping. So people did get a head start, and lots of shoppers, lots of folks that were there. It was fantastic. Dancing was awesome, as usual. I'll hold a comment on there. And then our Veterans Day program, we had multiple Veterans Day programs, and so appreciate the city for putting together the one in the morning, very well attended, and then always appreciate JFK inviting us to attend theirs, and it's always emotional when those little kids get up and start singing, and it was great. So that's a busy weekend. Good weekend.
Okay. I wanted to talk about, I want to give a shout-out to Dave Miller, who's the head football coach for Fairmont. They lost, unfortunately, Friday night. It was a tough loss, but it was a great season, and Dave was recognized as GWOC Coach of the Year, which is a great honor. He's done a lot of good work in the nine years, I think, he's been coaching. I also wanted to, it's been a while since our last council meeting. Trick-or-treats happened since then. And we do so many great city-run events, and this is a great one that is just totally resident-run in the neighborhoods, and it's one of my favorite nights of the year. The neighborhoods and the neighbors make it special, so my daughters love that, and it was fun watching them go house to house, and we have a lot of candy. I should bring it in and share it. We have way too much candy. And then I attended Dancing With The Stars, Dancing With The Kettering Stars with Ms. Fisher, and I had a chance to talk to some of the officers afterwards, and it was great to, the ones that were in attendance, and it was great to hear them talk about how they feel the appreciation from the city, not just at an event where we're raising money for them, but every day. I know police work's tough, so it's good hearing that they're getting that feedback from residents as they're out doing their patrol work. They keep us safe and let us live our lives and do the things we want to do, much like our veterans, which we celebrated yesterday at Delco Park. I wanted to give a shout-out to my favorite veteran, Louis Hewer, Kettering resident. He's my father-in-law. And also my grandpa, he's no longer with us, but John Sullivan, he was a veteran, also a Kettering resident on Valley Wood once upon a time, and we have a memorial brick for him at Delco at the Veterans Plaza. So just want to say thank you to all the veterans and Oakview. I didn't attend JFK, but my daughters go to Oakview, and they did a great concert, and it is a little emotional hearing those kids sing about how much they love their country. So a lot of good stuff going on, but that's it for me.
Thank you. Lisa?
First, I want to acknowledge and introduce Tara Powell from Kettering Health. She is a member of our KLA class this year, and she's the only one in the audience, and she should have come up and said something, but we all stared at you waiting.
We relied on you.
But welcome, thank you for coming. We will, KLA will have our education day this coming Thursday, where we spend the day with the Kettering City School System, and it's a day full of so much information, and it's a great day, so I'm looking forward to that. MVCC... MVCC has, we, I was able to attend a budget and personnel meeting where we discussed the budget, and we also passed the First Tier Suburbs Bylaw Amendments tonight, and at the last First Tier Suburbs meeting, we, there was a very robust conversation about blight, and, you know, Dayton and the buildings and everything, and how to, how First Suburbs can help to nip that in the bud before it gets to the stage of blight. And it's just kind of, this is an interesting week as a reminder of everything these regional groups do for Kettering and for every other city in the area, and it's just, it always makes me happy to see what these groups can do and how they benefit us and our residents, so I'm grateful for them. So, that's it.
Okay, we appreciate the time you take to attend those meetings.
Of course.
Okay. A lot of things have been touched on. I'd like to add my note of appreciation for all of those volunteers who came out for Make A Difference Day. It was two weeks or one week ago last Saturday. I'd like to make a special call-out to Victory Church. We had, I think, something close to 100, a little over 100 volunteers, and about half of them were from Victory Church. And if every church in this community poured out like that, we'd never have to have a single cleanup of anything. It was really wonderful, but thanks for doing that. We had kids from CJ and from Alter, and we had just so many people participating. It was just really neat to see. On a personal note, I have to have some minor surgery. I call it major because it's on me whenever it's on you, but I'm going to be on crutches for the next three months. I am absolutely fine. No one needs to worry about it, but if you can pick me up from the floor, because I'm not very good on those things, you might have to do that, but I appreciate your understanding if I don't make it to every event that's coming up, at least in the next couple of weeks. Might be a little hard, but.
You're still lighting the tree, right?
I plan on lighting the tree.
All right.
I'm planning. Should, that will be my coming-out party, so come on out and help me. Flip on the lights, like with Mr. Grayson, that is my favorite event that we do in the year. It's just really cool. Pray for beautiful weather because that does make a difference, but we usually tend to have a pretty good time, so. Congratulations to Park and Rec for their awards. They are truly one of the best, and we're so proud to, they are one of the things that make Kettering so special. Let's see. I think that's basically all I have tonight. I will give the little spiel I give every week now that 30% of our students statewide miss at least 10% of classroom time. This is unacceptable and poses a real risk to our children. We must do better, so please make sure your kids, your grandkids, and even your neighbor's kids get up every single morning and go to school. So, with that, this meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 26th, at the Kettering, a regular Kettering City Council meeting. Thank you.